The time. Okay, the time is now 7:43 and the executive session has been concluded. Participants in the executive session were straighter Brian Berger, treasurer, finance director Philip Hackett, mayor pro temp Gina McCretzy, trustee Andrew Rice, town clerk Paula Barnett, trustees Sukah Cindy Swisher, Peter Hilton Hinga, Devon Rowe, and myself as mayor. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to enter into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Hearing now, the next agenda item is we will resume the regular meeting at seven o'clock. Until then, we'll take a break, 15 minute break. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. So now, um, on the public comment. Oh, there is someone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom? There was an Eagle Scout who was coming. Is he not coming?
As of three o'clock today, he was planning on coming.
So, okay, well, maybe we can.
Like Bennett's taught me that Eagle Scout, I don't know.
I don't know.
We don't have a name.
Hi, Cody Tyler.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances of the town of Buna Vista.
The ordinances of Buna Vista.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter. To the best of my.
I know we have a busy meeting tonight, so I'll just get right to this next one. On this one, um, my words are a little more personal because Megan's been with us since 2017. And this is in a swearing in, she did that way back on her 21st birthday when she started. And, um, this is a promotion to sergeant. And she is, to my knowledge, the first female sergeant of the Buna Vista Police Department. So we're really excited about that. She has a big training section back here that came from several of them from out of state to be here, friends and family. So, if you'd like to join us up here, feel free. And Jesse's gonna pin the badge once that training's done. So, come on up, soldier. Yes, you. I am so proud to see you standing here, Megan. To get to this point in your career is no small achievement. I am going into my 24th year as a law enforcement officer. And in that time, my favorite role was that of a police sergeant. The testing process for sergeant was very difficult. Having been a sergeant myself, I was keenly aware of the skills and abilities needed to make a good sergeant, as well as the demands and challenges. The testing process was designed to see if the applicants were up to this challenge, and all the applicants did very well. I feel very blessed as a chief that we had such an intelligent, professional, committed, and capable pool of applicants for this very important position. But at the end of the day, you tested the best. As the men and women of the BVPD navigate town growth, increased calls for service, and a changing dynamic, I'm excited that you will be one of the leaders who leads this department into the future. Day one as a cop for Megan was her 21st birthday. Like I tell all new officers, you have to earn respect working the streets. If you can't handle the challenges and burden of being a street cop, you won't have the respect and confidence of your peers, or for that matter, the public we serve. Megan quickly proved herself to be hardworking, intelligent, a great communicator, and someone who not only did not shy away from high-risk calls, but often embraced them. I've kicked in doors with Megan in my vans. I ran down fleeing suspects with Megan's, with Megan. And I even leapt to her defense when her teammates said a pursuit with a guy in a moped was not a real pursuit. The reality is, all of the challenges of being a street cop are compounded when you're a female officer. For good or bad, right or wrong, some people measure a female cop's worth by whether or not she can hold her own with the boys. In arrest control, I've seen Megan throw an elbow like a linebacker. At PT, I saw you blitz one of your coworkers when you were five months pregnant. I've seen you talk people into handcuffs. I've seen you comfort people in the midst of tragedy and loss. Megan was the first school resource officer of the BVPD, and she worked very hard to develop this program. In this capacity, I've seen her work tirelessly, tirelessly with troubled youth. I've seen her work with special needs kids, and when she showed them her patrol car, they were smiling from ear to ear. I've worked many back-to-school nights with Megan, and on these occasions, I was made very aware of how loved Megan is by this community and how valuable she is to this department. When younger kids tentative of their first day of school see her and run up to her and say, Officer Megan, it sends a message loud and clear that this officer has the trust of these kids, and she helps them feel safe. Megan excels in this area, and I think it's worth pointing out that I think all of our officers share this relationship with the citizens we serve. When asked during the sergeant's testing process what she thought was the most valuable trait of a leader, Megan responded humility. I agree with Megan that this is one of the most valuable traits of being a servant leader, and it's consistent with the department mission and values. I appreciate how Megan exemplifies humility, not just by words, but by how she conducts herself. It is with sincere pride that I present this sergeant's badge to Megan. She has shown me that she is equipped and ready to undertake one of the most challenging yet rewarding roles in law enforcement, that of being a police sergeant. When she hit the streets on patrol at 21, some of the guys gave her the side eye, wondering if this girl had what it takes. I'm here to tell you this girl has what it takes. And at the end of the day, she's even taught the boys a thing or two. It is with immense pride that I present this sergeant's badge to Megan. Sergeant Mitchell, the first female sergeant of the BVPD.
Congratulations, Megan. Trustee, you have before you an agenda, and included in that agenda is the consent agenda. I'd like to know if anyone has any changes to the consent agenda. You need to have further discussion about any of the items in the consent agenda. If there are none, then it's like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
For further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 If you want to vote. Okay. So now, um, on the public comment. Oh, there is someone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom? There was an Eagle Scout who was coming. Is he not coming? You know?
As of three o'clock today, he was planning on coming.
So, okay, well, maybe we can.
Like Bennett's taught me that Eagle Scout, I don't know.
I don't know.
We don't have a name.
Row isn't on the list of.
See.
Down.
Okay, we'll move on to the budget hearing. Public hearing for the 2024 budget is being conducted in person and via Zoom. The hearing will be conducted. The hearing will be conducted as follows. Town staff will set an update on the 2024 draft budget. And call for public comment. Each member of the public who wishes to speak may do so, but must direct all questions to the board. Each member of the public wishing to speak will be given one opportunity to speak for three minutes. The public will generally not be provided further time to comment. Zoom has an area where you can raise a hand to speak that can be found by moving the cursor to the bottom of the Zoom window. Please use this function if you wish to speak, and I will acknowledge you when it is your turn. The board may ask questions of the public or staff at any time during the hearing. Once there is no further comment, public comment, the public hearing will be closed. So Philip, you want to start this out?
Sure, absolutely. I think the Eagle Scout is here. So what we could do is just go through the public hearing process, because I don't think it's gonna take that long. And then maybe we could pause before proceeding to.
Okay.
If that works.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Great, so page 65 of your packet is the summary memo for the budget this evening. And I'm glad to say that we kind of reached the final step here. And coming from last meeting, we did make a couple of smaller adjustments as directed by the board. And you'll see that under the analysis section, we were able to reallocate some funds and what was projected as a small surplus towards the BV Strong Community Dinner contribution, bringing that up to $4,500. So with that, we have structurally balanced funds. And you can see the various details of how those are made up through transfers and things like that. So I do want to recognize again our staff for contributing to a very successful process. Good to see John Schuman here. She's a huge, huge help for me in the finance department, getting things set up and ready to go on the budget process. So thanks to all the department heads for all their contributions and getting things submitted on time. And the board for, you know, giving direction, asking questions, and bringing us to this point. Again, there's a summary of the capital projects on page 67, 68. And then 69 is a summary of our planning projects or budget allocated towards planning projects next year. And then projected fund balances of how things should look at the end of 2024 with the budget as presented is on page 70. I will pause and take any questions for me.
I don't see any from Zoom. The trustees who I can see in person, any questions? Okay, thank you.
I think that's it. I guess what we can do now is take public comment and then conclude the public hearing portion. And then we can move to the resolutions.
Okay.
After that.
Okay, I'd like to open the hearing to the public for comment. Is there any comment from the public? Sorry, anyone on Zoom?
There's nobody that has their hand raised. We can.
Okay, I'd like to close the public comment portion of the hearing. Do any board members have questions for Philip? Take over.
Well, but I'd like to thank you for all your hard work and putting it together and figuring out ways to be able to fund as much as we are able to, to your whole team. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John, for helping Philip with staying. Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. Okay, now we have certain resolutions that we would like to pass in conjunction with the budget. The first one has to do with the 2024 fee schedule. And what page is that on? It must be.
So I've put together a memo of the process on page 108. And you're correct, the first resolution, or three resolutions tonight, there would have been four. Both property tax, mill levy certification will not happen until January 9th as of changes the state made. So that will not be approved tonight, but the fee schedule, resolution number 78, approving the budget with resolution number 79, and then appropriation of money to that budget with resolution number 80 is the sequence there. So if you'd like, you go into the fee schedule.
Did you get any changes from people?
I did not. Paula did not. Thanks to Paula and Lillian for not only kind of drafting or taking input from people on the fee schedule, but also putting it into a little different format that's easier to handle. So that starts on page 111. So no additional feedback since the last meeting.
Okay. If there are no comments or changes to be made in the fee schedule, I'd like a motion to pass the resolution number 78, series 2023, entitled the Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado, adopting the Town of Buna Vista 2024 fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution number 78.
Second.
So having LaCretzi and Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this a vote?
It is not.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we got three ayes there.
Aye.
Thought it was a roll call, so.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So now we'll go to item C, which is a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado, summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2024 and ending on the last day of December 2024. This is resolution number 79, series 2023. Is there a motion in regard to this?
I'll make a. So move.
Sorry?
I said I so move.
Oh, okay, so thank you.
Second.
And second, LaCretzi. We have Cobb and LaCretzi. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And then we will go to resolution number 80. This is item D in your packet, which is a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado, appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth, as set forth the law for the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado for the 2024 budget year.
Make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution number 80.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have LaCretzi and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion passes. The resolution is adopted. Okay, so now we'll go to item E, which is. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we might as well break for a minute. And.
Sorry, one, sorry, pause.
I was just gonna say, we're gonna go on to.
Yeah, go back over here to.
Right, we're gonna get ready to bow. Is that how you say your name, Row?
No.
Oh, all right, Row, please.
So I'm working on my Eagle project this year. And so, um, next slide. So what it's gonna be is it's gonna be a sign at the Mount, not all of it, cemetery. And it's gonna be a American flag cut out of quarter-inch steel with dog tags going down the stripes of the flags. And on those dog tags will have the names of all the veterans that are buried in our cemetery. The next slide has a sketch of the basic idea. So all the red stripes are where the dog tags will be placed. And the reason we decided to go with the red stripes is because the red stripes of our flag represents the blood of our fallen veterans that fought for our country. And it's gonna be placed at the Mount, all of its cemetery, next to all the other signs. There's a couple other signs out there. It's gonna have a roof on it, so hopefully it won't get rusty and that stuff. And we will make the dog tags out of aluminum, so they will not rust and corrode over time.
Very nice. How many veterans?
Uh, there, there are over 300 buried there from what I've gotten from the American Legion and our town. And the plan is to have plenty extra spots just in case there are more veterans buried there because there are still lots open at the cemetery.
Very nice. Very nice way to honor the veterans and a great project. Thank you for taking that on.
Yes, thank you.
Does anyone have questions for Row? When will you do this?
Um, so the plan is to get it done before March because I turn 18 April 20th, so have to get it done before then. But the plan is to get it done around March, so then I can focus on paperwork and stuff for the rest of the Eagle process.
Great.
It's a creative idea.
Yeah.
How'd you, how the wheels get turning all that to begin with, how'd you?
So our troop every Memorial Day goes out and we do a service for the veterans out at the cemetery. And then we were walking around and the American Legion puts these little plaques next to the headstones that basically says that they are veterans. I thought that it would be pretty cool to just have one sign that says all of their names, kind of where they're buried. Another thing that I didn't mention is I'm gonna have a smaller sign off of it mentioning why the coins on the headstones are important. So the penny, so if a penny's on a headstone of a veteran, that means you're a fellow veteran that visited. And then a nickel is you were in boot camp with them. And then a dime is you were in their unit that was shipped out, or you were in their platoon and stuff. And then a quarter was you were there when they passed.
How far back do the burials go? How many years?
Um, I know we have quite a bit of, where we have a couple from World War I, but I don't know the oldest yet.
It's a great project.
Yeah.
Thanks. And I'm just gonna share one other little tidbit about the cemetery and also our veterans. I found out yesterday, Reeves Across America, that they're putting the reeves on the veterans. This Saturday, they'll be putting at the cemetery. And they are looking for volunteers.
So when is that this?
1:30 this Saturday. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great, great work. Okay. I would like to continue the hearing regarding to the building code and adoption. This will be the second reading of the building code.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. This is a second reading, a public hearing for the adoption of the building code. As you recall, we had November 14th, Pat Green from Chaypee County Building Safety Department came and introduced the proposed changes. On November 28th, we had the first hearing, which is, excuse me, the first reading of the ordinance number 20, which is read, and this public hearing was set. The entire proposal ordinance was put in the newspaper at least twice, 15 days and eight days ahead of time, three times it made it. And so this evening is the, the second reading, which would be included in adoptions should the board desire. The planning staff hasn't heard any, received any comments about this. This would replace the existing building code, national electric code, international fire code, plumbing code, mechanical code, energy conservation code, and put in place the 2021 versions of that with some amendments from Chaypee County. Would also codify, although it's mandated by the state anyway, the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code as well. So, so the presentation after the public comment would be a motion to approve, deny, or I guess adopt amendments to the building code, ordinance number 20. We do have a recommended amendment, which would be to include an effective date of March 1st, 2024, to coincide with the Chaypee County's effective date, so that we're all lined up at the same time. So. So again, a motion to approve or deny with an effective date of March 1st, 2024.
Okay, thank you. So this ordinance number 20, series 2023, is entitled An Ordinance of the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado, repealing and reenacting Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 12, 13, 15, 16, 18, and 19 of the Buna Vista Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2021 International Building Code, 2021 International Residential Code, 2020 National Electric Code, 2021 International Mechanical Code, 2021 International Plumbing Code, 2021 International Energy Conservation Code, 2021 International Fire Code, 2021 International Fuel Gas Code, 2021 International Existing Building Code, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and 2021 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and amending chapter 18 of the Buna Vista Municipal Code by the addition of new Article 18 to adopt by reference the 2023 Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code. So the question is to the board whether there's a motion to pass this and be sure to mention that it would be amended for the due date, for the effective date to coincide with the county. Is there a motion?
Here we need some public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Is there a comment from the public? Please give your, your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Matt Knight Hill. I'm a Chaypee County resident at 903 J Street in Slida. And I've been working with the county and the city of Salida, particularly on the energy code update. And I would just say, I fully support moving ahead with the update as, as you suggested. And I just wanted to flag that I would encourage the town of Buena Vista, and I'm happy and available to share what I have learned as a volunteer member of the Salida Sustainability Committee, that, um, the town of Buena Vista consider exploring and learning about suggested additional amendments to the Twenty Twenty-One Energy Conservation Code. Salida and Chaypee County will, in the new year, continue to explore whether or not it would be reasonable and appropriate to adopt further amendments that would encourage even more energy conservation in the county and in each of the cities that are part of the county's building codes. I have a lot more details I don't, uh, that I'm happy to share outside of this meeting, but just in general. The energy code and buildings, whether they're homes or businesses in the county and in each of the cities in this county, are the most, one of the most significant ways to save energy in the community and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and save home and business owners' money on their utility bills. And the, uh, one of the consultants for Chaypee County was part of an effort to develop model code language for these further amendments to the energy code that would incentivize, um, building, uh, homes and businesses, uh, all with elec- electric infrastructure. It wouldn't prohibit gas, but it would encourage folks to consider building all electric. Both to save money and also save money in the long run. It's a lot cheaper to build electric from the get-go rather than try to fill the fuel switch on the back end. And so, that's just a brief summary, and I'm, like I said, I'm happy to follow up with, um, the town of Buena Vista with more information, but I just wanted to flag it as something to consider, and something Chaypee County and the city of Salida will be considering early in the new year.
Very well. Thank you for making the trip up here to tell us about that.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the, the time and consideration, thank you.
Yeah, so, Joel, will you be working with them at all in, in terms of?
We certainly can, I wrote a note on here, um, to, yeah, I mean, according to what the Board directs, for sure.
Yeah, it certainly sounds like something we should be learning more about. Great.
Yeah, we could connect.
Okay, yeah, happy to do that, I'll reach out. Thank you.
Great, thanks a lot. Is there any other public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Is there anything on, on Zoom?
Nobody has their hand raised.
Uh, is there a motion? To be made here?
Make a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance number twenty with an effective date of March fourth, twenty.
First.
Sorry, first, I'm sorry, Thursday, fourth, March first, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Let go to hand, come, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Great. Um, okay, the next thing on our agenda is, um, bids for the water conservation plan. And it will result in us considering Resolution Number Eighty-One, Series Twenty Twenty-Three, entitled "A Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, a resolution of the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, approving a notice of award to Swift Water Solutions LLC for the Water Conservation Plan Proposal." Sean?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, come on this. One thing I just wanna bring up, Kelly Collins was gonna, um, present, or be here tonight, she's traveling right now. And I, I mentioned it, cause Kelly's the chair for the Water Advisory Board, and Kelly did most of the heavy lifting on this. She, um, put together the grant application, we helped facilitate that through the town's account with Colorado Water Conservation Board. Kelly also spent a lot of time, um, working with the advisory board and, you know, and through this process and, and developed the RFP for, for advertisement, so. So, yeah, um, pretty, pretty much a win-win situation for us. We were in a, we advertised, um, we also sent the, um, the RFP out to many local engineering firms and, and some of the engineering firms that have helped us throughout the years. And Right Water Engineers, Right Water Systems, and Swift Water Solutions were the two bids that we received. So, um, kind of win-win there, right? Both have a pretty intimate perspective on the town's water system. Right Water definitely has been with the town, um, and probably since nineteen seventy-three. And they really help us with our drinking reports monthly, they're also helping us on a number, a number of projects, including World Three and World Four. And a lot of the start things, uh, water resource master planning, rate analysis, things like that. Swift Water Solutions, um, has been, uh, working with us, um, I guess as of late, since about, um, two thousand, I think, two thousand seventeen. And so, Swift Water, primarily Al Smith, and I think we're all familiar with Al's relationship with the town as, as once, uh, the Water Operations Supervisor and once a town engineer. And he, uh, started Swift Water Solutions, uh, a few years ago. And he's still been helping us with our water expansion project, project as, as consulting and owner's rep and some on-call engineering to help our water department throughout the years. This was, um, uh, very refreshing, you know, as, as a public works director to know that, you know, the, the two, the two firms that were, um, giving us, um, you know, an opportunity to, to choose and have, are more than qualified and have an intimate perspective on our water system. Through the process, we, uh, we channeled that through the applicant, uh, the, uh, excuse me, the RFPs to, to the Water Advisory Board members and, um, you know, developed a, a matrix, which probably wasn't as necessary as it was for projects like the water expansion. But I'm just the same, we wanted to get feedback, and, uh, the consensus was recommending Swift Water Solutions. So, I could get into it a little bit more, but you can see through the, uh, the RFP that, um, you know, he has a pretty intimate perspective. You know, um, he may not have, you know, the, the work history that Right Water has, but I think in this situation, it works out really good. Al and Right Water have a, a, a very unique relationship, um, in my opinion, because they're both helping facilitate World Four. And so, they know each other, I think Right Water is the town's consultant, so I think still offers an opportunity for, for maybe some light research or maybe some possible assistance through the project if that's needed. But feel like Al's and Swift Water Solutions is more than qualified, you know, for this. And, um, but he's, uh, the funds have been budgeted through the twenty twenty-three, um, and there is a, there's a grant match with this as well. And, um, yeah, I could probably keep going, if there's any questions, I'd be to kinda go through them.
And this cost was considerably less, too.
Yeah, it was, um, but we, we could, could, uh, you know, Right Water, I think we could have, we could have pulled off the Right Water as well. I don't think cost was the issue, I think for me, it was probably the, the, I really liked the RFP. Right Waters definitely showed more experience, and they have it, a larger firm, um, it's capable, it's, it's, you know, everybody's in the state doing what they do. They're very specialized in this, uh, I think Al, um, Al's team brings something unique, you know, with Paul Young on board and Joyce, uh, as well. I think that they're kind of well-rounded, but I think the thing for me is, is like, he's had his hands on our system. He has, you know, he knows this, he knows this very well. He knows where pitch points are, and he knows where, um, where we're at, um, very intimately with, with the situation we're in with water. The unaccounted, you know, the conservation funding, the, you know, uh, kinda go, you know, talk to each other. Intimate perspective on our, our consumption use over the years and, you know, and, and I think that he sees our parks, he sees our community. I think he has a, a strong connection with our community, so I think the outreach programs and the ability to connect with our community, um, I, I think it's a good fit for us. Part of our community.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you, and thanks to Kelly for pulling together the, the RFP as well. Okay, is there a, is there further discussion, or is there a motion to proceed?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Eighty-One, Series Twenty Twenty-Three, as noted in the agenda.
Second.
So, we have Rice and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? If the motion passes. So, um, now, we will go on to talk about the item P, the Billy Cordova Memorial Park. The question is, should the Board of Trustees approve the resolution, the adoption of Resolution Number Eighty-Seven, Series Twenty Twenty-Three, entitled "A Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, Approving a Professional Services Agreement with Star Playgrounds for Playground Equipment for the Billy Cordova Memorial Park." And would this be Shane?
Yep, I'm gonna get him on.
Hi, Shane, hi.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Yeah, so we put out the RFP for Billy Cordova Memorial Park on October thirteenth. We gave the companies a couple weeks to, um, you know, get their proposals back to us. And we received two submittals, um, one from Star Playgrounds and one from Churchitch Recreation. Star Playgrounds based out of Littleton, I believe, and Churchitch Recreation out of Nywha. So, both, um, you know, fairly local Colorado companies. And, um. This, uh, RFP was specifically for the playground and playground equipment, as you all approved. A few months ago, we were working with, um, Valerian for the design of the whole park. But because, you know, we'd kind of been working from, with Star from the start of, um, you know, kinda our, you know, this current push for, to build the park out in the Sunset Vista neighborhood. We, we still needed to go out for the full bid for the project, so, um, we received two, uh, two very quality submittals. Um, and our review committee, um, met on October thirty-first to look them over. You both, um, scored very well on project understanding and experience and had done similar projects and price. However, um, Star Playgrounds, um, was the unanimous choice and, you know, averaged a score of ninety-one point three-three out of a hundred. Where Churchitch only had eighty-two point one-seven out of a hundred, um, mainly because Star's experience with community builds. And with, you know, the massive amount of public support that we've seen for this Billy Cordova Memorial Park project, you know, we really wanted to make sure we let, had a professional, or had a community build to, um, put the playground equipment together just to give the community a good payoff, um, for, you know, all the work that's gone into this park. So, um, you can see in the packet, um, starting on page. Sorry, I just had it. Two thirty-eight, um, is Star's proposal, um, and then the playground, um, uh, renderings are on page. Sorry, a lot of pages to the proposal, uh, the rendering start on page two forty-eight. So, we have a good, um. We have a main play structure. There, if you wanna scroll that, scroll the next page there, Brian. Uh, a little entryway and then a little two-to-five play structure, um, a little climbing feature, um, next to kind of the main play structure. You can see in the background there, um, the, a fire truck that's actually on Springs. There is a four-bay swing set in there. There we go, let's hold on that one there, Brian. Um, and then the cozy cocoon, and then a little kind of like model police car. And then you can see on the rendering there, the gray is the port-in-place safety surface. Um, and the orange or brown is the engineered wood fiber. So, our entrances are kind of, uh, one entrance to the playground, um, is over by, um, kind of the little entry sign there. And then the other entrance is by the, uh, fire truck on Springs. So, both entrance, entrances would be on the port-in-place, um, surfacing. And then, um, you know, kind of the more, um, older kid features, um, and not, the features that aren't labeled inclusive are on the engineered wood fiber. So, um, the total contract, um, would be for, um, two hundred and sixty thousand, um, for, um, the playground, um, and that includes the final design and equipment layout, uh, leading the installation for the community build and installing the port-in-place in engineered wood fiber. So, staff recommends that the Board approve, approve with amendments or deny Resolution Number Eighty-Seven, approving an agreement with Star Playgrounds for the playground equipment and playground installation, playground equipment installation via Community Build Day for Billy Cordova Memorial Park.
Shane, is it likely that, um, the community build would take place all in one day?
That is the plan, um, we currently have it, uh, penciled in for August twenty-fourth. But, you know, depending on the schedule for the rest of the park, um, we might need to tweak that. You know, the Community Build Day is definitely gonna be on the later end of the construction phase.
Great.
And, um, Shane, this is Sue, I, uh, uh, it's the port-in-place that's the accessible part of the playground. Is the grass around that, all that you showed us, uh, considered accessible, is that? Or does, do you have to have something else constructed to get to the, uh, the port-in-place?
So, that is just Star's rendering of the playground, um, which doesn't include anything else around it. The playground will actually be fenced in, um, similar to, um, Millie Crimble Park. Um, and a lot of people are actually very excited to have another fenced-in playground in town. I'd say that's our most popular playground feature in town is a fence at Millie Crimble Park. So, um, there will be concrete pathways going to both, um, both entrances.
Okay.
Is that included in the bid?
Uh, that is not included in this package, it'll be a part of the ma- uh, the whole park construction package. And we're, we're planning to go out, uh, put that out for RFP, you know, March or April, depending on when, um, Valerian finishes the final design.
Great. Any, uh, questions, more questions from trustees?
Happy to make a motion if we're ready.
Alright.
Alright, well, I'd like to motion, I'd like to make motion to approve the adoption of Resolution Number Eighty-Seven, Series Twenty Twenty-Three. Second.
We have Luttrex and Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes, thanks a lot, Shane, it's a beautiful project.
Yes, it's coming, coming together ver- really well, we're excited about it, thank you all.
Okay, so, um, item number H is the next one, um, which is, uh, has to do with requesting, a request for proposal for the comprehensive plan, and this is Planning Director Joel Betson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, trustees. It's, uh, it's been a few years of discussing comprehensive, and, um, you know, the last one was updated in twenty fifteen. We're required to do it every seven to ten years by state mandate. And there, there was sort of a comprehensive plan process begun last year at, at, at one point. And, um, we've since, you know, kind of shifted gears with different staff turnover and things like that. So, we're looking for this comprehensive plan, you know, to begin this process. So we're looking for this comprehensive plan, you know, to begin this process. The RFP that we put together is based on, you know, kind of mining from other RFPs that we found in previous RFPs for the town. And it really is geared toward presenting a desired process and seeing what some of the specifics might be from the various, you know, proposals. So, so we stayed away from kind of dictating process so that, so we're open to whatever process might be. What we're really looking for here is, one, if there are any suggested changes, I know, like, we did not include the airport master plan in this draft. But we're going to include that, that the economic study is one of the reference documents for that. Thanks to Trustee Cobb. And, but we're really looking for a motion to proceed with this. If you all still feel like giving the priorities in town, that this is still a good, a good process. It's going to take about, probably over a year to complete. It'll take a, you know, a lot of staff time. It's something we have to do anyway. So it's, it's open to you all for any discussion, but really, hopefully a motion to proceed with publication with, with any amendments. Or, or not, and, and, yeah. So.
One question, Joe. We said there's a requirement updated every seven to ten years. Could you speak a little more about what that requirement is and why that time scale is kind of?
It's, you know, I don't know the specifics in the state statute, although Jeff might, but it's for any statutory municipality to update. Have, I think, a comprehensive plan or a long-range plan or something every, every particular, you know, time period. So that people are planning, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, it's basically required. So you, you also need it for other types of planning activities. So you basically are continuously, you know, dealing with all kinds of connectivity issues with roads, et cetera. So I'm not sure on the timeframe either, to be honest with you. I just, but it's definitely something you want to keep up to date because you also use it to make certain decisions like whether to rezone property. And one of the criteria when you're deciding to rezone a parcel of property is whether it, the, the planned new zone district is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Like, does it make sense to, in the town's overall planning scheme? So the comp plan comes in in a lot of different situations, particularly like when you're making land use decisions and deciding on zone districts and what you're going to require, stuff like that.
Well, when we, we did, created a unified development code and rewrote the code, we had to do the comp plan first so that the code could match what the town actually desires. It's a, you know, a visioning document and, and like Jeff's saying, most major site plans, subdivision proposals, variances, et cetera, there's a line in there. Does this, how does this relate to the comprehensive plan?
And one more question. Looks like you're releasing the RFP in January with a submittal deadline in early March. Can you hazard a guess as to then how, what, how the rest of the schedule would play out? Is this something that would finish by, I mean, in a certain time?
Yeah, so we have, yeah, the proposal's submittal deadline, March fourth, and we'll review that, award a bid. And then we have in there, I think, completion may, you know, a little over a year to complete the process. So usually there's a series of public hearings or meetings, I guess, open, open meetings. Different charrette processes. There's a series of stakeholder interest group meetings, advisory group meetings, et cetera. We have to coordinate with the, the particular party consultant group for what we know as far as where people might be to get particular types of information. Do we just do a survey online or do someone set up a booth down at the soccer field on a, you know, where we can get different types of people? So there's some of those processes and it takes several months. I think we have estimated probably in the late, kind of the winter time that we'll review that with Planning Zone Commission or the Board of Trustees and get some input for a rewrite or two before May adoption of twenty-twenty-five.
It seems like that schedule is kind of a Goldilocks problem, a little, little too fast and you burn everybody out and a little too slow and you lose momentum. You know, so that timeframe, would you, once you select the consultant, they'll probably have some input on that.
Absolutely.
That schedule.
And that's part of why, I mean, you know, one, we don't really have the, the staff capacity to take on a project like this. And, you know, there are a lot of, it's a big industry for having, for creating comprehensive plans, you know. And so they have a timeline pretty dialed in, similar to the Chicago Ranch Master Planning Process, you know, but on a town scale.
So Joel, then do all these other plans sort of follow the implementation of the, the comprehensive plan? Then we, then we end up rewriting all the other ones to?
Not necessarily. A lot of these are, are visited quite frequently, you know, and, and we, we've amended the Recreation Master Plan a couple of times. I know we would like to fold the Recreation Planning into this. We had a meeting, a joint meeting with the Water Advisory Board and Planning Zone Commission. And we discussed folding in the Water Conservation Plan, you know, within some of this, which can then help inform, you know, code changes and things. So, you know, the infrastructure planning is happening every year. We have to keep finding those things. So the water, you know, Water Master Planning will be doing at different points in time. They don't have to, we don't have to update everything because of this, because it naturally is updating.
Okay. Mayor, I have a question. Joel, I noticed that in the deliverables, it's at least one comprehensive plan draft. Why, why just one? Is that just what we can afford? Or, I mean, it seems like it may need to go through more iterations.
Well, and that envisions most of the iterations will be with the Planning Zone Commission. So by the time it gets to the trustees, we have at least one for you all for that, that feedback.
I see.
Understanding when, we don't want to overburden the trustees with, you know, multiple, multiple inputs. But maybe there's a need, we need a second one as well.
Okay, okay. So there may be more iterations that just won't all come before us.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the idea is by the time it gets to all the staff have vetted it, Planning Zone Commission has vetted it, which is part of their statutory mandate is to work on a comprehensive plan. And then by the time it gets to the trustees, it's a, you know, it's in pretty good shape. There will be updates throughout as well. So it'll be an interim process with the trustees. It should be as the process is going along.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? So you're looking for authorization from us to go ahead with the RFP. Is that right?
Yeah, motion to proceed.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
I believe we proceed with publishing the proposal for the comprehensive plan as you present it.
Second. That's Rice and the Crutsey.
Thank you, Joel.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the next item, it has to do with the Central Colorado Regional Airport Engineering and Consulting Services. The question is, should the Board of Trustees, Trustees approve the adoption of Resolution number eighty-six, series twenty-two-three, entitled, "A Resolution Approving a Professional Service Agreement Between the Town of Buena Vista and Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated for Continued Airport Engineering and Consulting Services for the Next Five Years, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine." And we have with us Jack Wiles, Airport Director.
Good evening, Mayor. Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to present this. So our resolution can be found on page two-seventy-one and the follow-on documents thereafter. We're recommending to remain with Dibble Engineering. They've been with us since two thousand and nineteen. The last time we did this process was in March of two thousand and nineteen. And we reviewed a number of engineering companies at the time and selected Dibble Engineering. They were, so they've been with us. Now, we posted out a request for qualifications on tenth of November. We see, and we posted that on our webpage, Facebook, the town webpage. And we actually sent out packets to Dibble Engineering, Armstrong, and Kimberly Horn, which in the previous iterations did quite well. So the staff, we had a matrix that we used to help us score the recipients. And unanimously, Dibble came out ahead, as they did last time. And quite frankly, we, we just don't see any reason to change. They've done a great job for us. Part of the, you know, the process of getting an engineer on board, they're used to what we want. They know what the town, what we're trying to achieve. And they know our airport. Each airport's unique and has, you know, different things that we want accomplished. So it, it just, the fit seems quite well. And Dibble Engineering offers us like a full service approach. So they, not just, you know, from planning, programming, route to construction to closing out. So that entitled, you know, no other special services they provide. One of the big things with Dibble Engineering, we bonded quite well with them. And I can, you know, pick up the phone and anytime we have questions that deals with, you know, aviation builds or FAA, CDOT, they're very, very responsive. And that is very key. You know, prior to them, we've, you know, we've had other engineers and we had a bit of legs. So there's some times that, you know, we need a quick turnaround and Dibble's always been there for us to help us out. And especially with, you know, developing, you know, working with FAA, other government agencies. And, excuse me, helping us with their capital improvement program, which we just finished, which, you know, is with the town, but also we, we plan of projects of five years. They have a great passion and Jared is the Vice President, Project Manager and Construction. So, and he's a very hands-on, so we, you know, right to the top person all the time. So that's one of the reasons we, you know, we still choose to stick with them. They're not just an airport engineering company. They, you know, they have, and, you know, when you're doing projects with the airport, there's, you know, a lot of other stuff that has to go along with paving, very similar to construction, hangar development, paid road development. So the company Dibble is not just aviation. Their, their office in Denver is the aviation, but they do deal with transportation, water, flood control, structural engineering, surveying, infrastructure rehab, and land development. So a very well-rounded engineering company that, you know, any kind of projects we get involved in, they can quite effectively handle. They have quite a number of offices and like I said, they, their main office for us is in Denver, which is very handy. So let's say we, we're looking for approval from the Board of Trustees in the town to remain with Dibble for the next five years and carry on as we have.
Thank you, Jack. Does anyone have questions for Jack? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution number eighty-six, approving the Professional Service Agreement between the Town of Buena Vista and Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineers for Continued Airport Engineering and Consulting Services for the Next Five Years.
Second.
Thank you. So we have Cobb and Will. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for looking at that deck. Now we have a really, really tough question here. Okay. Item nine, cancellation of the Board of Trustees meeting scheduled for December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Have any comments on, on this? Is there a motion in regard to this?
I move that we plan to cancel.
Heck, yeah.
Schedule for December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Andrew.
Second.
Second from Cobb. Rice and Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. A little break now. Okay, great. And now we have staff reports. Hopefully not too long, staff reports, but yeah, so it's ten after eight. Police chief.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. I've taken up some time already, so I'll just be super brief. I would say, I think this is my third time presenting a budget. And it's always a fun meeting to see the process and see it approved and see how the town works. I would like to thank Philip. He's really mentored me with budgets and stuff because I'm a cop, not a, not a math guy or a number crunching guy. So he helped me and this year, he and Brian both sat down with me and we had some good conversations. And we really worked hard on the police budget and he showed me some things related to the town and the general fund and all that that I hadn't considered. So really appreciative of that help. I also appreciate the board. Merry Christmas to everybody. Hope everyone has a good Christmas. I do have a card for everyone. And for the trustees that aren't here, I'll leave their card with Paula, if that works. My staff report, I'll just let it speak for itself to save time. Feel free to ask me any questions. I'm just highlighting some of the things going on with our department, some of the trainings there. The new facilities are super nice. And as you can see in my report, we've got a lot of outside entities in the first responder community that are going to be using our training room. And then we're hosting some trainings that, in two thousand and twenty-four, the National Tactical Officers Association is coming to teach us some things on leadership. And Megan actually coordinated that one. We have a field training officer school where agencies from around the state are going to be able to come to Buena Vista and, and benefit from that training. And then some special events there. I have some pictures from the parade of lights. That went really well. It's about twenty-five degrees with wind. So it was really nice. When it was over, people cleared out fast. After the Fourth of July parade, there was a lot of milling around and we got to wait to move the barricades, but that was like, like, so we enjoyed that. I've put some yearly stats. I just randomly picked some different types of calls for service we've had, so you can see. There is a typo from the traffic citations. I forgot to update those from November, so that didn't change. But that's a typo. If you want the real numbers, I've got those. Even since I printed this report last week, some of those numbers on the right have gone up a little bit. So yeah, feel free to ask me if you have any questions about that. You can see our calls for service have gone, or our case reports have gone up quite a bit. Crashes have gone up quite a bit. So just some things that we always look at. And I just also included a couple of other things, just as a representative example of the types of calls we've had from just last month's report to this month. And you can see there's some interesting things in there. And also I just included two screenshots of an app that we use called the Citizen Contact App. And in two thousand and twenty, when Colorado passed House Bill two-seventeen, it mandates police to do some data collection on most of our police contacts, especially self, or contacts that we initiate. That's data tracking to make sure that we don't have any things like profiling or something going on within the department. So you can see what that app looks like. We get a report every month. It's pretty nice. It's right here on our phone. So if we do a traffic stop, once the stop's done, we can enter some of the analytics that we're supposed to enter. It's not people's names, but it's, you know, their ethnicity, gender, things like that, the duration of the stop. The duration of the stop, whether or not we used force, whether or not we did a search. Um, and that helps keep us, um, honest. And then that goes to the state. So every officer in the state has to do that. They're developing a database to track those things. So, um, just an example of some of the, um, data we have and things that we track. So again, thanks for your hard work over the years and support and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, do you, um, do you see any, um, trends in your data that we should be concerned about?
Um, I don't, the, um, you know, as far as the officer's contacts, um, I don't see anything. Um, the, the company that offers that, it's a free app for us, but they offer, um, additional pay of analytics where it'll give graphs and everything. We can track it better, so that's something I'll probably look into. But keeping an eyeball on it, in, in this community, there's just a certain demographic and dynamic that we're just not seeing anything that's concerning. Calls for service, uh, that's a little bit different, some of those. I think the traffic crashes, um, are just reflective of it. It feels like there's more traffic in our community and our roads. There's more traffic and I think that's the result of some of that. And seeing the DUI numbers go up, um, that, that's definitely concerning. And keep that in mind that sometimes there's only one or two officers out there. So how many DUIs are they missing? Let's see, Cody, who we swore in tonight, his second day, he got a DUI. So it's out there. And I think it is something to consider as a community. The more liquor establishments we have, the, the more you can see that number go up. And I think that's something just, just for awareness, because, uh, there's a lot of people killed on Colorado roadways from drinking and driving. Does that answer your question?
Is the department pretty well staffed up now?
Um, yeah, so our, let's see, Cody just graduated and then, um, Megan Shunover graduates on Thursday. So we'll be going down to Pike Peak Community College to her graduation. And we will be fully staffed for the first time in quite a while, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Nice.
Exciting. Now this year, we've had, um, a couple of light duty from injuries and me and Down Two, it's been, you see it in the overtime budget. Officers have been working hard. So we've got a really good team. And you can see with, uh, the officers here supporting each other, they're very committed. They love to serve this community and be officers here, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, um, so now we have the, uh, planning director, Joel Benson.
Thank you. Uh, my report starts on page three hundred twelve. Included this month, a little bit more, uh, details of the major subdivisions. I also touched base on a couple of, uh, major site plan or my major minor site plan reviews that we've been doing for Buena Vista and Carbonit. We've been processing lots of building permits and Public Works is catching up with those and sending those back. There's a lot of building permits for review on water lines and sewer line spacings and ever, et cetera, et cetera. So we're hearing those. The S F E count and probably, we haven't finished the last, so you, you won't see a big difference from last month because they're still in process. But it shouldn't change too much because most of those building permits were approved in subdivisions that have public improvement agreement, in which case S F Es have already been allocated, so the farm and the, in particular. We headed down on Thursday to the upper arc with our, uh, city covels coming, Brian and I. We're hoping to hopefully wrap up the upper arc agreement. Figure if we get all the attorneys in a room, really just ours and theirs. We're locking the door and, uh, they get some big nog, no one's leaving until everyone's happy and agreed.
We'll see who's read the package.
And that's for the, the fifty acre.
Fifty acre feet.
You anticipate any curveball?
No. No, it's just one little teeny detail that we've got. It's just a communication thing. Um, and so we would expect that it would come before our board and their board, uh, not till January, but pretty soon. Anyway, we still need two, um, alternate members for Planning Zoning Commission. We have one application. We've got maybe three others who are threatening to submit an application. We haven't seen those yet, but, uh, but we still have a full, a full board of five, uh, to keep going. Anyway, my, if anyone has any, any questions, um, thank you for approving the comprehensive plan. You know, given that direction to go forward, uh, we'll have the three mile plan. It's been approved by the Planning Zoning Commission. I just wanted a little more time to prepare a good presentation. So we have more time during meeting, not knowing the length of this agenda. And, uh, so we'll see that February.
Great. Questions for planning?
Just a comment that I really appreciate the extra information, the updates on some of those projects. I just wonder, so thanks for, for throwing that in there. It's helpful.
Thanks.
Likewise, Joel. Thanks for all the updates and, um, also for researching the whole, the noise, uh, issue. Sounds like you have some thoughts on that.
We have a plan.
Thank you for your personal commitment to, to the town. Okay, um, now we have Public Works Director, Sean Williams.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, board. So start off just, uh, just, um, water is, as always, right? But I think, I don't know, it's a Christmas present. Uh, it's, it's kind of a crazy world we live in these days, right? And on my end, you know, we've seen with the last few, you know, uh, projects that we put out to be, you know, um, water plant projects, things like that. Sorry, I'm supposed to be fast, huh? Sorry about that. Gosh. You guys have been here a while. Anyways, um, yeah, um, just want to talk about leak detection in our county. So, you know, we're, we seem to be struggling a little bit with that. But, you know, when, um, life gives you whatever it gives you, you, you've got ways to do this. So we, we have some technology and kind of where I'm going with this, I think, uh, I think Joe got me an early Christmas present. I think he found a pretty sizable leak today. So we took our, um, correlator out, some of our listening devices out. We were kind of, um, training some of the staff, um, had Mark out there, Mark Warner, our new town engineer. So we kind of crewed up a lot earlier this week and got out there and we, you know, we knew that we had something going. I mean, CD on account is pretty high again, um, on our own system. So, um, I think tomorrow we're gonna tear up, um, San Juan, South San Juan and, and Pine Street. See what we find there. We also, uh, probably found a smaller one on Yale Place. It looks like those ones are, it's, it's very humbling, just so you know. I mean, leak detection, you know, it's, uh, unlike, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's just really humbling. Um, and you, you think you have some things and, and the technology is pretty fantastic. And, you know, a little bit how it works is, is there's some, um, opportunities to like drop, um, um, like we'll call them pods, but what they are is they're correlating, there's, they're using sound waves to kind of identify frequencies. And by plugging in the distance, uh, you know, separation between these, these two, uh, kind of data loggers is what they are. And plugging in pipe size to get shape indicators. So we'll do multiple chest on, on, you know, on things that we're doing. Kind of, kind of walk around. Maybe do it a different way, maybe correlate and measure it out. But we had some, we had some strong hits on that area, so feel pretty good about that. Yeah, and kind of back to the consultants, yeah, we're really struggling getting them. And, um, Mark, uh, is, is offered to kind of help, kind of cow dog that effort where, um, we, we might need to move on from the consultant that we, that we brought in earlier this year. We just can't quite seem to get him back. Um, we're gonna keep plugging, you know, plugging away on that. But we also have, you know, there's other, there's other consultants out there. I think that the, uh, you know, the budget allows for, for this to be done. And we talked about it, you know, uh, earlier this year or later this year, earlier this year, on, on, you know, trying to make that part of our operations, especially when we see our encounter to kind of spike that way. But, um, we'll see how it goes, you know, we'll see how that goes. Pretty, pretty, um, it's, it's kind of exciting, you know, um, and it's, uh, it's one of those things that you, you don't always look forward to digging up a water main, because, you know, we do all of our repairs live, you know, we keep, uh, uh, we, we turn the pressure down a little bit, but we, most of the time we, um, get wet, um, a little wet. But we like to have the, uh, pressure device just to make sure this is not being introduced. Yeah, it's, uh, still alive. Uh, we've had a few, you know, midnight runs, three o'clock in the morning runs, uh, Easter day runs. It's, um, yeah, it's, it's very, it's very rewarding, but, uh, so, yeah, look to improve that. You know, uh, there's also a couple of other things that you're kind of working with Mark that are in the report I'd like to. And I know that Mark has got some experience, but as far as some of that conservation work, I think Mark's gonna be a good fit to, um, help us with that. And I know that he's got a, you know, he's got a, a, a pretty extensive, uh, work experience, you know, working with water municipalities. I think he'll bring a lot of, of, um, yeah, talented with that and maybe forward with, you know, how the conservation plan kind of goes forward. You know, we see some areas where, you know, that we need to apply some of our, some parks and maybe talk to the school about sort of the way that they're watering it, when they're watering, things like that. So I think it's gonna be, you know, uh, you know, uh, yeah. Lot to do there. Um, yeah, the rest of the report's pretty, pretty much the same. I just touched base a little bit on Elfron. Um, since we met last, there, there is a typo here, uh, that's, it's a one and a half years. It feels like two and a half years, but I was, been talking to those guys for about a year and a half. And that's not all me dragging this out, just, just for the record. I, I, I've tried, I drag things out. You know, uh, unfortunately, from time to time, uncertain, et cetera, that are time sensitive. And I don't always, uh, uh, you know, sleep very well when that happens. This is kind of one of those projects where, where, you know, I, 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 I just, you know, they, they've done their due diligence. You know, the local developer hired a very talented team, uh, to do the work. They've been, you know, very amenable. Uh, they met with the Water Advisory Board, um, last spring and, uh, wrote down some things. Then we wrote down a list and we had some items on there that were a concern and sent it back to them and worked that into, uh, a phase of the draft, um, since the time that, uh, we talked about it, um, as a business item with the Elfron Development Team. Uh, Bruce and Dan came, talked a little bit about where they're at, had some feedback back and forth. We had some inclusions and, um, those inclusions were, uh, uh, met with an amiable and, um, supportive, uh, uh, response from them. And so we, we included those in there and was, uh, access to, uh, monitoring, uh, for the domestic wells and, uh, additional monitoring well for, for, for sampling as well. Got those things in there and there's some language in there that, um, um, we sent off to Jeff and Catherine and Catherine, uh, kind of redlined some things and sent it back to, um, the upper team. And, uh, you know, again, they, uh, more than, it, it seems more than amenable. I, I, I'll, uh, we'll, we'll follow up with that when Jeff and I have some time to, to review it. Definitely want to be bringing Brian on board. I put some of the documents into our, our Google kind of, uh, drive box with the Water Advisory Boards just to kind of keep this status updated and, and look at that. But, you know, initially I think that the, all the checkboxes were made, um, on the application process and some of the things that, you know, we were concerned about was like, yeah, we don't know where the waters be. You know, Right Water had a fantastic report that they provided that kind of identified the, uh, the awareness and, and the mitigation for the hydraulic, you know, uh, water table impacts, you know, with additional wells there. So look at that real close, you know, and again, some of the things that we were concerned with were, you know, the ability to, to manage, monitor, uh, staff time and things like that. So we cut that included and also access to, uh, the, the domestic wells that as they, as, as they construct or what we, you know, constructed up, they would have the ability to, to get to those and do some sampling for, you know, uh, just in case there's some indicators, just in case something is, is, um, you know, not, not going very well. Or future, uh, you know, regulatory changes for other, you know, types of testing that might come through, uh, EPA or C D P H and things like that. So, um, we'll, we're, I felt, I felt pretty, um, this is kind of one of those things that you just, you know, um, I'm, I'm definitely the, you know, the dumbest guy in the room when we're talking about this kind of stuff and I'm with Al and I'm with Right Water and I'm with Andrew and I'm with Brian. Um, you know, it's pretty fantastic minds. But I, 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 you know, in a perfect world, we don't develop in there, right? In a perfect world, our, our five mile radius, there's nothing in there at all. I've got, um, uh, full-size three drawer filing cabinet, two and a half of those drawers are full of, um, water. Supply protection district applications that have been processed. Maybe about half the drawers, one said Hal and I have done, and Right Water and I have done, and Archie and I have done. But, you know, there's a lot in there. There's a lot. There's ag in there. There's, you know, the whole Seagull Vista, you know, kind of, uh, development that, you know, so was a good, was a good lesson on not what to do. And, and we looked at that real close. But I just, you know, I just want to recognize, um, kind of how much I really appreciate. Uh, development doesn't really, doesn't go well. Um, yeah, I mean, like, it's, it's a tough thing to do. And, you know, we, we got our hands full in town. Um, I feel pretty lucky, you know, and, um, to have the team that I have here. But also feel pretty fortunate that, um, the people that are working on that project are vested and, and, um, are committed to, uh, to, you know, doing what it takes. And financially, you know, it, it's, it's shown, you know, what, what I've seen there. So anyways, we have a little ways to go still, but I just wanted to kind of share with you kind of where we're at right now. I'd like to wrap it up. I'd like to wrap this up. And I think that we're, you know, we have a, a little bit of review time to left to do that, to do on this, uh, but, um, uh, yeah.
Corner development.
Yeah, it is, um, you know, and the stuff that's happening in towns, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty impactful. You know, we, we have a, a few things that, you know, are, you know, we, we have a lot to manage right now. But between staff and, and our consultants, I think we're doing a very fantastic job. So.
Thank you. Any questions for Public Works Director? Okay, uh, thank you very much.
Sorry for taking so much time with that. Appreciate it.
So now we are at trustee interaction. Um, I wanted to let you know that the, um, post office has done an internal audit of their operations and they have issued a report which is accessible to the public. If they just put in, um, the, uh, letters are, or the numbers are two, three dash one, three, zero, dash R twenty-four. And anyone can access that report from their internal auditors. It has a lot to say about their, um, customer service. So, um, Gina, got anything?
Uh, just a quick note to share. Um, I was invited to, uh, the E V C's meeting last week. Um, and I just wanted to let, it was, it was a really nice meeting. It was super positive and friendly experience. Uh, just, you know, there was a good synergy to move forward, building a better relationship, uh, which was great to hear. Um, and I know they have some plans to, uh, in their strategic focus for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Um, just to show up to more meetings and so not to show up just every once in a while, but, uh, just the ten more meetings and share more public comments just to keep us kind of in the loop as well, which I thought was nice. But, um, anyhow, I just wanted to let everybody know, I, I was invited to attend their meetings and it was a good experience. Good, so.
Andrew?
Yeah, I feel like if, want to plug the water conservation plan a little bit. The rendering of the playground showed a very lot of lush vegetation and, and trees. And I'm glad that Sue, you, you brought that up. I think that those types of things will be, uh, uh, a focus of the water conservation plan to look at what types of vegetation, irrigation demands, you know, water needs and so forth. And so I think the rendering there was not exactly the proposed landscape.
No, there's about eight thousand square feet of kind of turf area, if you will. We can talk through the fifty percent design review. Perhaps even earmarking a spot for a future irrigation well, uh, to take it off of the distribution system and having basically it's an isolated well for the park itself, depending on what the demand is for eight thousand square feet. And then, uh, Chris with Parks is really kind of taking a, a long look at type, species of type of turf that would be most productive over there, um, that would facilitate.
A nice, uh, turf area for kids to play, but also, um, keeping in mind drought tolerance, so.
Yeah, just, this is an opportunity to plug the water conservation plan. I probably have some. And this is an opportunity to plug the water conservation plan. I'll probably have some, yeah, some recommendations along those lines.
Yeah, and I think Shane could probably speak to it better, but I know on the, uh, the grant application, um, we definitely made mention that, you know, we would be being water wise with this park. And that's our goal to be water conscientious.
Cause all, all the way in one end of the spectrum is we'd like to develop a pipeline to the NFL. And so we want all of our players playing on gravel fields. Would they get used to that there?
Sunday, Sunday Swisher.
Oh, hey there. Um, I really liked the Eagle Scout project. And I think it'll be really neat that the project will be completed and it will be out there for the Memorial Day services. I think that will be really special for our town. Um, and just want to wish everybody, um, a Merry Christmas if I don't see you before.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you. Uh, Sue from Mexico.
Yeah, also just adding my wishes for a Merry Christmas for everyone. Um, and also another thank you to Jeff and his firm and sounds like others nearby, um, for the, for choosing us as a beneficiary of this year's, um, uh, Christmas, Christmas gift. So thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, no, really just, uh, wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And, um, you know, I think, uh, along with, we talked about this the last interaction, Devin mentioned it, uh, meeting with the EDC and, and now a few members as well. And, uh, just want to reiterate what Gina said, that, um, it's productive. And I think that there was just a good amount of miscommunication, discommunication, like just talking past each other. And so hopefully we can all work together, um, as a kind of collective community, um, on these issues. So I mean, that's the only main thing that I really have to add since I've been in Denver since leaving. So that's about it.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Merry Christmas to you too. And Devin, hope you're feeling better soon.
Yeah, so too. Yeah. Um, the only thing I have is about the post office. It's, uh, really hard right now. Uh, I've waited an hour the other day to get a package. And I've heard it's been something between that and three hours. I've heard hour and a half. And it's just, it's not acceptable to have that be how the post office functions, even is. It is the busiest time of the year for the post office, but if, if there's any way we can put some pressure or do something. I know it's just a really hard thing for the people in town right now. And it's nothing against the employees. The employees are great. It's just very obvious that it's understaffed and just a, a hard place to be. And I don't think any person should have to wait that long in the post office. It's, it's unacceptable. So I don't know if there's anything we can do, if we can contact, uh, Representative Peterson to try to put some pressure. But, you know, in a month, it won't be as bad again until next year. So it's like, if they're not paying attention to the busy time of the year, then it's not gonna be fixed ever. So I don't know. It's just very frustrating that we've gone through all this this year, taking different avenues to try to help this and it's not better at all. So that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would suggest that you look at that, uh, internal audit report. It's pretty frank.
What happens with that? Is that just saying, oh yeah, we suck? Like, or is it more than that?
Well, they evaluated thirteen Colorado mountain towns and Buena Vista was the worst in terms of employee turnover.
Oh, wow.
Like seventy-eight percent.
Yep. Did you get a link to that or could you email?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, they got recommendations for the regional manager, the Wyoming regional manager and then responses from the regional manager. Uh, so definitely a lot of good information in there.
Yeah. Well, that'd be a great thing to disseminate to, uh, citizens, cause I know they're, they're struggling right now. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Jeff?
I don't have anything to add. Hope everybody has a great holiday. I think we're gonna be talking a little bit more tonight, but, uh, no, I don't have anything.
Um, really the only thing to add, um, as far as this agenda, just giving a shout out to staff. I mean, it's pretty hefty packet with a lot of good information, a lot of big steps in the right direction to set us up for twenty twenty-four. So I appreciate everybody for doing that. I mean, no small task on the budget. That was, you know, detailed, well vetted, thorough. Um, the amount of time you guys allocated to the community for public input, uh, public comment, but really just all around impressive. So it's a big lift, uh, really sets us up going forward. So, so deserves to thank you for that one. Yeah, on the twenty-four.
Great. Jeff?
On the twenty-four, I agree. Yeah. Merry Christmas to you all and see you soon.
So.
Um, also Merry Christmas. One thing I, I omitted from my report inadvertently was that I have an obligation, January eighth through the twenty-sixth. They will not be around. So, um, my staff will do the lifting.
Yeah.
And I feel it's gonna be interim planning. I'll be out of town for a couple, a few weeks. So should have some periodic inhal access because they're wet.
Okay. And Sean?
Yeah, I'm with Dean. Uh, Phil, thanks for, uh, coaching, um, all the, all the help getting our department squared away. Yeah, thanks to the staff and the board as well. Appreciate, um, everybody. And so having a Merry Christmas.
And well, a couple of things. All right, um, Christmas party this Friday. Second thing, trustee packets for the twenty twenty-four election will be available on Tuesday, January second. And third, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Jack?
Yeah, that, thanks again for reviewing our resolution and, uh, looking into dibble. Um, like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy, safe New Years. Uh, just reminder, trustees and staff warden, we'd love to have you drop by on Thursday afternoon at three o'clock. We're having a little bit of food and libations and just lots of war stories of whatever you want to tell. And, uh, thanks for everybody, your support this year. We couldn't have done it without. Thank you.
Looking forward to your Christmas party. And, uh, Finn?
No, I've said what I, I want to say. Thanks, everybody. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Am I, anyone out here? Axe?
Merry Christmas.
Okay. All right. Now, um, we are going to now executive session. We don't have anything in the information only section. All right. So this is going to be an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four E concerning the top side annexation. Um, would someone make a motion to, um, go into executive session?
We'll make that motion.
For seconds.
Second.
McCroutsey, Bryce? Favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes and has the two thirds, um, level to allow us to go into executive session. So let's take a seven minute break. Back.
Who else is gonna be in the executive session?
You will.
Gotcha. Like.
Is that an option?
I know.
We, we, uh, country up there. And it's, uh, is it traveling lights tonight?
Somebody traveled light.
So where are you talking, where are you talking about?
Yeah.
Where are you talking about?
Uh, mining cabin up above the campground.
Gladstone?
Is that what it is?
Above the Cledge Peaks campground.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cool. Pretty cool area.
Somebody has actually commented.
Jeff Oldger told me one year that he personally sets the skin tracker. It's like that's his mission in life, is to be the first one packing it in.
Nice.
That's part, not part of the executive session.
Not that I have money to buy it and then have like certain, like, sweet cocoa. And like people coming up there and be like, it's just pretty, it's just like.
Good night, thank you. Have a good night. See, most of you are all looking forward to Friday. Yeah, somebody else see tomorrow. Of course. Okay, um, it is, um, December 12th, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is nine fifty-two. For the record, I am the presiding officer, Mayor Libby Fay. This executive session is being electronically recorded. Also present at this executive session are the following persons. Uh, Administrator Brian Berger, Finance Director Philip Puckett, Planning Director Joel Benson, Mayor of Town Gina Lucrezzi, and Trustee Andrew Wright. Uh, this is an executive session for the following purpose. Uh, this is an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four E concerning the top side annexation. I caution each participant that all discussion must be confined to the stated purpose of the executive session. That no formal action may occur in the executive session. And that everything that occurs in this executive session is confidential and may not be disclosed to any outside party. So. No, are you laying off here?
Yes, thank you. Jeff, did you want the recorder or is it following our negotiations from legal advice?
Yeah, the, I, this is for negotiation, so the recorder keeps going.